Evening, everybody. Can we rise to the pledge, please? Let your nations do the flag of the United States of America. The Constitution Republic for which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. We'll call the Monday, April 1st, 2024, special meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please? This is DeAngelo Steele.
Here.
This is Liskini.
Here.
This is Martindale.
Here.
This is Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Bosso. Here. Uh, can I get the, uh, motion to adopt the, uh, agenda for this evening, please?
I'll make a motion.
This is Peterson. Thank you. Seconds. Um, this is Martindale. Roll call.
Yes.
This is Martindale. This is DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
This is Liskini.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Uh, yes. Um, items for discussion will open up for our special meeting. Superintendent Search Process will introduce staff.
Well, I'm going to introduce my partner, Frank Forstofel.
I'm sorry, Frank.
Don't worry about it. Okay.
And he's going to begin our presentation this evening.
Further away from the table. Just like, yeah.
Okay, that's good. Good. Welcome, everybody. We're thrilled that you're with us. My name is Frank Forstofel. I'm here with my partner and friend Deb Campbell, and we're consultants with, uh, K12 Business Consulting. And we are honored to partner with you as you embark on what you know is a very important process. Ultimately, as statutory requires, your commitment to appoint your next educational leader. But before we go any farther than that, I want to thank you, Board of Education, your wonderful treasure for your service to your district, your kids, and your staff. And obviously, we have several members of your staff here tonight. Welcome. And thank you for everything that you do for the students of this great district. So tonight, we'd like to just take a little bit of time and kind of review of the process that we employ and use, uh, to engage your community in the process, uh, to select your next superintendent. Uh, this is a process that our firm has used since 2001. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Um, but I know the board has some familiarity with this process. But I think, in full transparency, I think the members of this audience would like to know a little bit about the process we're gonna go through, um, to engage with them, uh, through this process. Uh, so our goals tonight are, are simply this. One is to kind of review this process, to give people a snapshot of what we're going to be about. And then towards the end, we kind of want to get into logistics of kind of mapping out this search, uh, hitting the milestones that are critically important, that we stay on track, uh, to get to the end to your selection. Um, and then finally, just to kind of work through all the final details and really hopefully at the end, kind of formally kick off your search, which is important. So before we go any farther, it's my honor, uh, we've talked about this on how we're gonna do this. Do we talk about ourselves or do we talk about each other? Well, we're gonna talk about each other. Um, so Deb Campbell, um, who will be, uh, the lead consultant, uh, in your search, I won't read all that to you, but you can tell Deb has a vast array of experiences as, um, a district leader, uh, very highly successful superintendent, um, in the district she served. Um, and then also, those of you, all of you that are in the Columbus area, and they're very full well the BASSA organization that supports superintendents around the state. Uh, Deb has been a leader and continues to be a leader, um, in that organization. And I think because of, of her experiences and her connections, that is only gonna inform, uh, and help your searches as we move forward, because as you're gonna hear, uh, networking and recruiting is a critical component of that. So the more people we know, the more we can talk to, and hopefully convince them to be advocates for your, for your job. Okay, so I'm gonna hand it off to Deb.
Well, thank you, and it's an honor to be here tonight. Nice to see folks in the audience. And thank you very much to the Board of Education for allowing us to assist you in this search. I'm gonna talk a little bit about my partner, Frank. Um, Frank was the superintendent at Sycamore City Schools. He's very respected and accomplished in the Cincinnati area. Uh, he also does a lot of faculty work at Xavier University. And, um, he's been working for our firm for two years. And he picked up right away on how to lead and conduct searches. He's been lead or co-lead in just the two short years he's been here, and he's done that for five different searches, so.
And I, and I must say that Deb has led or co-led 34 searches. She's got the gift of longevity on me, but she doesn't mean...
I'm a lot older than he is, folks. I just don't like to say it that way, so. Let me talk a little bit about the search. Um, so we start by involving the community, involving the board, involving, um, stakeholder groups, because we're going to try to identify what are people looking for in their next superintendent? What characteristics would they like to see in that superintendent? We're gonna collect that data in two different ways. We're gonna do online and paper, uh, questionnaires that anyone can complete. And then we're going to hold in-person focus groups. Those in-person focus groups will be for community members, for staff, for, uh, we will even meet with students. That's our favorite group to meet with. They don't hold anything back. They tell you what it's really like at Southwestern city schools. So we really enjoy that. And, and then we use that information to, um, go onto our next step. And I'll be telling you that in just a minute. We do help the board determine a salary range, because when you're asking a successful superintendent to look at leaving a school district where they love and are loved, they need to know what the, what the compensation's going to be. And so we do comparisons of salaries throughout the area, throughout all of Franklin County, and also some salary comparisons of the, uh, Educational Service Center. So we do that, and then hopefully, after this evening, we'll be able to announce your vacancy, that it's open, and we could, uh, start recruiting. So if we'll go to the next step. I said we'd be doing focus groups. We will do focus groups for staff. We will do focus groups for the community. Those will be very well publicized on the district website. And, um, people will receive invitations so that they know when it is, what time it is, where the location is. Then from that, we will publish a, um, superintendent search profile. That profile will talk about, uh, what is good about your district, what are challenges that are going to be facing your district, and what kind of characteristics are you looking for in your next superintendent? That will be posted, a very transparent search. That'll be posted for everybody to see. And then what we do is we go out and try to recruit candidates for your position. And we want someone that has, um, academic credibility as well as leadership performance.
Thank you. So, um, this is step three. Um, we're already starting. I'll be really honest with you. We've generated a list of, through our contacts statewide, and some of the other consultants that we work with, and just our other connections, starting to generate a list of people that we wanna contact and, and start to have conversations about. Um, sometimes, as Deb said, those conversations can take multiple times, right? Um, and maybe a little arm twisting for them to actually consider, but that process will evolve over time. Um, one of the key elements that we wanna do is to make sure that we market the excellence of this district to potential candidates. That search profile that we will, um, generate as a result of the focus groups and the surveys will be a critical component of that. There isn't a candidate that we don't talk to that knows our process, uh, that says, "Can I see the profile first?" All right? And so we, we take that process very seriously to make sure that we articulate in that profile everything we've heard and everything we read through the, the amount of engagement that we do. Um, so that process is kind of already starting, and it's an evolving process. Um, and our network is strong. It's, it's statewide. And we'll leverage it. I'll be really honest with you to make sure that, uh, we tap those people and at least dialogue with those people that we think would be a good fit for your excellent school district. So Meredith, wouldn't you mind, please, thank you? Once the process evolves a little bit, um, and we start, we, we've done the vetting, we've done, uh, talked with a number of candidates, and we get to that point where the application, um, deadline, um, is up. Okay, it's May 17th, I think, and we'll show you that timeline in a minute. Then we'll start to have conversations with the board, and we'll present the full of candidates to you. Um, you know, we'll have done some work, um, kind of vetting those candidates quietly among ourselves, talking with people that they work with, and we'll kind of review those with you. Um, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it's the Board of Education's decisions on who you want to meet and who you want to talk to. Okay? And we'll work through that process with you. Um, the other thing that we think is really important, and we pride ourselves in, in our processes, once it gets to interview time, we, we wanna help manage that for you. As a matter of fact, we manage the details of that for you, because we wanna keep you at a high level, right? We don't want you to have to worry about the logistics and the details of the interview process. We want you to focus on the big decisions you have in front of you, right? And that's the candidates you're gonna talk to. So you will see that we will provide a very clear idea and process on how you can work through that interview process, uh, with, with the candidates. Once we get to a process and, and you've talked to a number of candidates, and we'll talk about how many, um, you'll ultimately decide that, and if you get to a two or three finalists that you're really sold on, then we'll talk to you about that process as well. And one of the things that is kind of a staple of our process, when the finalist time comes, when you got that two or that three that you're really interested in, then there's an opportunity that will facilitate a conversation with the community, with those people, so your community can get to know a little bit about the people you're considering for your next superintendent. Okay, but we're gonna work through all of that here in just a little bit. Okay? All right.
Yes, she did.
I think that's you.
So, once the board has decided on their successful candidate, then, um, we will help them, if they so desire, negotiate a contract with that successful person. Um, right now, the board is already looking at the contract of the current superintendent, reviewing the language in the contract, reviewing the benefits and the wages, so that we all know, uh, where we're going, and everybody knows what the expectations are. Um, then we make sure that all the components are ready for the new employment of that superintendent. So we're gonna make sure, uh, along with legal counsel, and legal counsel does the most of the contract, but we assist in any way that we can or that we're asked to do. And then step six is not a part of our process that is included in the search price. Uh, but we've had so many school districts that, once they hired their new superintendent, they say, "Well, we need to set goals for our new superintendent. We need to have some coaching for our new superintendent." Or maybe we just want, as a board, to work together as a board with our new superintendent to set some guidelines and, and set some communication channels. And so that is an additional service that we provide. But many of the districts we work with choose that service, um, because they want their new employee to be successful.
So before we get and take a look at this, any questions from the Board of Education about process? We're gonna work through a lot of the details of that, including timeline here in just a moment. But any questions that we can answer?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
If, okay, tell me again, stakeholders are involved in the process when, how many, how many candidates are narrowed down? About how many candidates?
Typically, when we get to the final, we can call finalists. It could be two or three. We don't like to really define that right now. I think we have to leave that somewhat open-ended, because you gotta let the process take its course a little bit. It's a great question, Camille. I appreciate you asking. But in terms of other engagement with the community, we've talked a little bit about that search profile process, where we're gonna engage, uh, lots of your community. We're gonna go to every school and talk to every staff, students, shareholder groups. That's a really exciting part of this process, so everybody has their input. Okay? That helped, didn't it?
Can I jump in for just a minute? And then at the end of the process, when you have your finalists, those finalists will spend a day in the district. And so during the day, while they're here, they'll meet with different stakeholder groups. They'll meet with teachers. They'll meet with administrators. There'll be a community segment where they can, the community can meet those finalists. And then, of course, they'll do their board interview. And, um, so it's, there's community and staff participation at the beginning of the process, and then community and staff participation at the end of the process. So it, it's a process that really values your community, values your stakeholders, very transparent, and allows everyone to feel valued and heard.
Okay, so here comes the participatory part.
Of the board.
Of the board. Um, we, uh, have drafted a proposed timeline, okay? And the way we think about this is always begin with the end in mind. When, an idea of when the board would like to make that appointment. So we thought about June 10th, somewhere in that, in that area, as an appointment by the Board of Education. We really worked backwards from there. Um, and we kind of bookended that, from the hiring to when we'd like to announce your vacancy in a couple of days, and then everything in between. Um, you know, if you look at the totality of that process, it's about two months. That's about right. Um, you know, it's, it's not too long, but it's not too short. But also understanding you have a really large district, okay? And if you'll notice in the very, at the second line, we have really, uh, we've really centered on four separate days for us to spend in your district to engage with your shareholders, to help us build that profile. Um, and then you can see some of the other things that we wanted to, we wanna go through. So once we spend the four days and we collect all the surveys that have been submitted, um, then we take a little time between the 18th and the 25th, and we actually put together that profile. That's a document. Sometimes it's 15, 20 pages, depending upon the amount of data we collect. And we will then present that to the Board of Education. Now, some boards like us to come and actually present it in public session, and we're more than happy to do that. Others would just like to have it to read. That's up to you. Once it's done, then we, we strongly suggest that we make it available to the public via your website, so the public can read it. Uh, but we can decide that as, so we've kind of bookended that in as well. Uh, if we announce on April 3rd, uh, this week, um, and then we close deadline for applications on May 17th, it's about six weeks. That's plenty of time. You know, we're gonna spend all of that time, um, talking with potential candidates. So, and I'll be honest with you, people know it's out there anyway, right? Pretty clearly, okay? Your, your superintendent is very well respected, and people know that he's, he's moving on, and, and they know that this job is open. Once we close the applications and all the, the applications are, and then we're gonna spend some time with the board and, and do what we call candidate screening. That's when we spend time with you, looking at the candidate group, and helping, and kind of guiding you through the, the concept of deciding who you wanna talk to in that first round of interviews. Okay? Um, and then you can see, we've, we've identified two potential dates, the 27th and the 28th, to actually conduct those interviews. Those are board-driven interviews, where you're interacting with the candidates. Again, we'll manage all of that for you. Um, we'll solicit, uh, feedback from you on the types of questions you wanna ask your candidates, uh, but we'll kind of manage the details of that in terms of scheduling and all of that. So that'll be two days, uh, depending upon the number, right? Um, and then after that couple of days, then you can decide on who you want your finalist to be. And we've, uh, identified two days for that, and as Deb said, um, for a candidate, that's a full day, you know, that they get to spend in the district if they're a finalist. Spending time with you, other, other constituent groups, so that the community has a chance to interact with the finalist, and then we'll go from there. And then at that point, uh, then you've got your big decision in front of you. Okay? Um, and then we can talk a little bit about that. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, tell me how, when we get to the second round, are they gonna interact? The school gonna be out? That was where my brain went.
Yeah, well, we, we'll send out invitations to people.
Okay.
And we'll structure the day for them, where they can come in, um, on a, on a very detailed schedule and interact with certain groups. They can't interact with everybody, right? So we'll identify and help, and talk with the board about who you want them to interact with. Members of your staff, members of your business community. It could be any number of things, and we'll structure that. But way ahead of that, we'll put that out in front, so we can get those people invited, um, and scheduled. Okay? Great question. Okay, so reactions to the timeline. Any concerns, any worries? Again, you will notice it's proposed, so it's fluid. You can work through it. This is Martindale. You, you're, you're gonna look at it, and that's okay. We're reading the room a little bit.
Maybe, maybe, Frank, we should share that the board involvement would really be on May 22nd, the 27th, the 28th, the 3rd, the 4th, and the 10th.
Yep.
So all of those profile meetings are not attended by the board.
That's just...
We do, we do those, and our staff does those. So those are the dates the board really needs to concentrate on, to see if those would work. Okay, so that's what we need to hear. What conflicts, so we can move the schedule around?
Um, also, is there...
Need your microphone. Need your microphone.
Um, is there a way, or would it be possible or beneficial to not have a six-week window for accepting applications, or is that really...
We need a six-week window. When you're recruiting, you absolutely need a six-week window.
That's typically the timeline that we have, yeah.
Worried about a few things here and there.
But, I mean, it's just... Not having been through this, being more not really knowing what to expect, I was under the impression it would go a little bit faster than that, and that we would maybe aim for the end of May, having a decision by that point. Um, so I think that that's, it's just throwing me off a little. Not that I'm not open. It's just that I kind of anticipated a timeline. Um, this is a little longer.
Yeah, I, it's a fair point, and, and grateful that you shared that. Um, there's no perfect timeline. Uh, actually, our first draft of this had it pushed out even farther in June, believe it or not. I mean, we've done searches that have lasted three and four months. We've done searches that have lasted six weeks, but those are the ones that usually we're not aware of until May. So we tried to hit that sweet, sweet spot for the board while, while making sure we provide enough integrity to the, all the things that are important in the process. The engagement, the profile, giving us ample time, um, to really not only just recruit potential candidates, but do our own behind-the-scenes vetting of potential candidates. So, again, it's at the discretion of the board. I mean, we'll move it, and we'll, we'll accomplish whatever it is that you want. But Deb can weigh in here. I, I don't think June 10th, that final date, hinders the, you know, any candidates from hopping in, to be honest with you.
Is it? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is it more for the applicant, giving them that window, or for you guys to have that window as far as deadline for the application?
Both.
Both.
Because, let's say we're recruiting, um, someone from the Cleveland area. And they know a little bit about your district, but not a lot. And they're gonna wanna come down here and spend two weekends looking at the community, uh, looking at real estate. Even though they might not be the successful candidate, they have to know what their family is going to be experiencing. So it takes, um, sometimes it takes 10 phone calls for us, for an applicant, and maybe two or three visits to the district. That really can't happen in a more compressed timeframe. So that six weeks allows all of those parts and pieces to take place, and I don't know if you wanna...
No, I think, I think Deb said it real well. I, I always go, if, if you can create a little longer runway for yourself to really take your time, but certainly not too much time, to do the things that, that need to be done to get the best candidates and thoroughly see the process through, I think. And I'll go back to, I don't, I don't think June 3, 4, and 10 are too late to hinder anybody's interest in your job, to be honest with you.
And Frank, I thought, I thought I heard him, the concern about the staff.
Yeah, that's, I think that's where my...
Any of those meetings, those meet and greet meetings on the 3rd and the 4th, um, the community meeting is usually around 5:30 in the afternoon. And that's open to staff. It's open to anyone. But we like to have, uh, the board maybe tell us, you know, "Let's make sure we have some teachers during the day meeting." And maybe not all the teachers could be there. But, uh, usually, your associations will have a good idea of who key leaders are within the district, and let us identify them and have them get a personal invitation. So we wanna make sure that they're there.
So they'll be notified in the...
Yes.
While of the day.
Well, this timeline will be posted. Once the board agrees that they can make the 22nd, 27th, 28th, June 3, 4, and 10, then it would be posted. And those, those are dates that I hear are still in question, so we need to...
Well, those are done by June 10th. I gotta go fishing on the 12th in Canada.
You already told me that, Chris. I didn't forget that.
May 27th to 28th, is that a Memorial Day?
It's the following.
It's the, um, the following. The following, okay. Yeah.
And those typically, the first round usually occur late afternoon. And we'll, we'll orchestrate that schedule. I'll make you.
I would not be able to just be in the meeting on the 10th.
In which one?
The, the June 10th.
Wow.
Oh, that's your regular scheduled board meeting.
Yeah, and, and we've had occasions where the decision, and, and the board will call a special meeting for the sole purpose of appointing.
Yes.
So that one could be fluid.
Yeah.
So if we needed to change that to June 8th, um, what I'm gonna say is, after you've decided on your candidate, we need a, we need a couple of days to make sure that we have the contract negotiated, and, um, your legal counsel will be involved. But the new superintendent's legal counsel will also want to look at that contract. So we've got to have a few days in there for negotiations of the contract. I know every superintendent that we have hired takes their contract to BASSA to look at. And so, you know, that's free legal counsel for them. So we just, the 10th doesn't have to be firm. Um, but if the other dates can be firm, I think we would be really good. But I would like to set that hire date tonight.
Your questions are great. Thank you very much.
Danny Scott. Yeah, I kept thinking of the week you probably had. 27th is Memorial Day.
We're going that Tuesday, Wednesday, you know, just legislatively speaking, we're saving that.
Yes, it is.
So you wanna move that to...
28th, 29th.
28th, 29th.
Try to look at your calendars.
28th and the 29th, um, and then... And then, if it's the 28th and 29th, that's sufficient turnaround time to decide on who the finalists are and get that all orchestrated for the 3rd and the 4th, if that works. The 28th and 29th, does that look okay? Okay, thank you.
June 3 and 4.
June 3, June 3 and 4.
What, what do you say was the time, like the time of day? Did you save that?
So for the, I'm sorry, I'm gonna use this. The 28th and 29th, typically, the first round interviews start late afternoon, and they can go, you know, end of the evening, depending upon how many people you're talking to. So, you know, if you're talking to eight, it could be four and four, whatever. Um, now, on the 3rd and the 4th, that, for the candidate, that's a full day, but through the board, it will not be. But typically, that's usually, we backload that at the end of the day for the board. Yeah.
True.
Sure, thank you for doing that.
And then if you're thinking about a day for... Are you out the whole week of the 10th?
Yeah, I'm in a conference then.
Okay, so we would need to go like, maybe the 7th?
7th.
I'm looking at your legal counsel, you think we can get a contract? Yeah, I mean, actually it takes a day for their legal counsel. So if we say the 7th, but that's a Friday. Or the 8th, I would say we move it to June 8th or June 7th.
The 8th is Saturday? My assumption would be that would be the sole purpose for the meeting would be to appoint the superintendent, so.
Friday, the 7th.
Friday, the 7th or Saturday, the 8th, what's the will of the board?
I'm open.
I'm okay.
I'm fine.
And the candidate will be fine.
Absolutely.
They're fine on all these dates, I'll tell ya. They like them all, right now.
I just think if we could, you know, get into that Saturday, that gives us one more day. And we can work on the time of that as we get closer.
Is that meeting open to the public?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Okay, we good?
Did we say the, okay, let's review the dates. 22, 27, or 28 and 29.
Yep.
3 and 4, and June 8th. Okay, great.
You did great. Okay, so what else do we need to work through?
We need to work through the rest of the agenda. That's yours, so I need to get my account.
We have some other things we wanna work through you.
And you'll find that agenda inside of your folder.
We gave you, yeah, it would be this one right here. So we'll kind of walk through that a little bit. Some of which, actually a lot of which, the broad strokes we just defined here, but we'll get into some of the little details of issues. And it's really helpful, this is critically important as we mail these down and really kick off your search.
Okay. So we typically have a liaison for communications. You have a communications director, Evan. I've already been working very closely with Evan on scheduling open meetings and that. And then your board president is the communications spokesperson for the district. Typically, we find, we've worked with Dublin City, we find that the Columbus Distats will be interested in what you're doing, very interested. So we designate a spokesperson, and that would be the board president and Evan. Now, K-12 will assist if sometimes we may ask to explain the process to the newspaper. But we don't talk to the media. That's the board president and Evan's job, okay? Evan is also creating a timeline to go on the web, well, this timeline will go on the website. We will also have a criteria form for folks to fill out for the questionnaire about what the characteristics are they want. The profile report that we develop will be on the website, the brochure, and we will determine that tonight. And the job announcement will be on the Buckeye Association of School Administrators, your website, and K-12 website. And then K-12 does Twitter and Facebook and blasts your opening all over the state. So we have a lot of followers, so. So that's your communications part, any questions about that? Okay, Frank, you wanna talk a little bit about the posting?
Yeah. So Deb mentioned, we've been working, Evan's been great and Mr. Tarazi's been great about, and Mr. Garci, Garci's been great about giving us information about the official posting. It's really a brochure, it's a formal announcement of your vacancy. It gives a lot of information, and I think we've given you a sample of it maybe in your act, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's probably in there. So it lists a lot of things about your community, about your district, some wonderful financial information about your district. And also, it gives the candidates information about how to submit applications. They submit those directly to us. And also, it'll, we'll make some revisions on it based on some of the changes we made to this timeline tonight. And it also gives a profile of the Board of Education, which is critically important. So once we get that finalized and done, our goal would be to formally announce on April 3, okay, in all the ways that Deb just mentioned. And then really, once that starts, then we do our informal things behind the scenes with candidates. But people are waiting for it, I'll be honest with you. They know the vacancy's here and they're looking for the formal announcement. Any questions about that? Okay, and you should see on there that the application deadline, except we're pumped up here, is May 17. Okay, that, about that six-weeks window.
Okay.
All right. Okay, next, Deb wants to talk to you a little bit about those focus groups that we've talked about. We've spent a lot of time, Deb, and Evan, have been working really closely with you. Thank you, you've been amazing about helping us understand the logistics of one school to the next school and making sure we get all these, and so Deb will talk to you a little bit about that.
So we have a spreadsheet started. Evan's great on spreadsheets, we have it started. And we will be visiting all of your buildings. And that will be announced to the staff on April 8th via a personal invitation. It'll come via their email. We will also work with Evan about getting that out to a local newspaper or whatever you might have on your website, all of those things. We have directions for their media department on how to get all those things out and in a timely fashion. So the groups we are proposing we meet with are students at each of the high schools and the Career Tech Center. And we developed a criteria for each of the principals so that they give us a great cross-section of students. We don't want all seniors, we want students from 9th through 12th grade. We don't want all National Honor Society kids. I love that the one day I went into a group and this young man said to me, "I don't know why I'm here, I'm never asked to do anything." Well, those are the, we need those voices. So we always make sure that we have given enough guidance to the high school principal that they can give us a great cross-section of students to talk with. So we'll talk with building administrators, central office staff, teaching and building classified staff. We'll have a special session for the bus drivers because they are usually busy when we're doing the focus groups. So we wanna make sure that their voices are heard. And then we also advise the board to give a list of, and I know Evan already has this, but of elected officials, the mayor, people in the township or the county and all that, that we can give a special session to them. And Evan has already worked on that, he may need some names from you, I don't know. But he'll contact you if he does. So we wanna make sure that we have a special session for them. A lot of times, the CTC, you know, you guys have your own Career Tech, but a lot of schools don't, and they want that superintendent from the CTC to come to a focus group. So just thinking through, we'll help you guys think through who should be invited to that. And then there will be an open community meeting. And because your district is so large, we're gonna hold those on two separate evenings to give people plenty of time to come. If you can't come on this date, then maybe you can come on this date because we want a lot of input from everybody. So those are the groups we're proposing that we would meet with. Is there any questions about that or anyone we've missed?
Can you tell me where will the location be for the meetings being held? Would they all be here, here, trying to do like buildings?
Both ends of the district, yeah.
Got it, that's what I wanted to know.
He's really good about making sure we're, you know, getting him every place we need to be, so. And once we have that, you know, you've been on spring break, so principals have to assign rooms. So we're just now, I saw the email, Evan, so that they know who we are and why we might be talking to them and, you know, getting those rooms assigned.
So that 15th and the 17th meetings is the ones that's like one here will be, that's at 5:30, those two options will be Evan at different sides of town, like a pick-up location on.
Yes, yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, so the same, 15th and 17th will be that way. And then the 16th and 18th will be that way. I think the 16th and 18th are both here.
Well, once the 16th, I believe, will be here, the 18th will be in very township suburbs of the buildings, just based on enrollment numbers.
Okay, yeah, Evan is really good and has been very helpful, so.
I get it.
And would you say that it's beneficial or not beneficial for us to be in attendance?
Oh, great question. It is not beneficial for you to be there. Now, I would say this, I think it is gracious for the board president and maybe one board member, since you're gonna have four different sessions with community, you know, and key stakeholders. I think it's always appropriate for you to come, thank the people for being there, and then disappear. Because we want really, these are all confidential conversations with K-12. We want them to be that way because that's when we get the best data.
Yeah, I concur with what Deb has said. You know, in thinking about how those conversations go, we wanna make it relaxed, but we wanna give people that opportunity to be upfront and honest. And I certainly believe you want that too, right? So we parallel what we ask in the focus group similar to what we do on the survey that goes out. And it's basically around three themes, right? Where are the strengths of the district, right? And then what are the opportunities for improvement or growth or challenges, however you wanna phrase that? And then we talk with folks about what attributes do they wanna see in their next leader? And, you know, we simply, we're listeners in this. We just wanna collect the information. We may on certain times kind of reiterate or redirect or just to clarify, just so we understand exactly what we're hearing, and we're gonna collect all that information. That information then ultimately ends up in the profile that we'll provide to you. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Okay, great, great. Related to your involvement in the development of the profile, we're gonna ask you to do your own survey, but we'd also like to spend time with you individually to do kind of your own focus group, one-on-one with us, we can do that by phone, by Zoom, or we can do it in person. We'll walk you through that at some point. Because your investment in this is obviously there too, right? So, and you're contributing to this profile as well, so we'll work you through that as well. Once that profile is done, we'll send it to the board. And we've proposed on April 25th, if you would like, and I need an affirmative or not, if you'd like us to come to the board and actually prevent or present the themes of that profile. We found it, it's a good exercise so the community can kind of see what we heard and what we read. We'll post it anyway, some people may not read it. So may I ask the question, is that something you'd like us to do? Is come to your and present the profile information to you as a board, into your community?
So the date would be issued, the 25th is the night of the educational foundation fundraiser? So I'm not, I'm not opposed to having that happen, it just wouldn't, it wouldn't be able to be April 25th.
Okay.
The day before.
I think you guys have a board meeting on the-
You have a regular meeting on the 22nd?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can turn the profile around.
We were just giving ourselves a little leeway. I mean, we've had thousands of profiles before to read through.
Yeah.
But you're a larger district. When Dublin did their search, they did an expedited search and didn't gather all that information. So, you know, we've dealt with a lot of, we just wanted to make sure we had time to do justice to what we were hearing.
So April 22nd? Okay, we'll make that change. Okay, and then you may go-
May 22nd, right. Well, April 22nd, okay, got it.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, the rest of that, what we need to talk about is we've got the deadline for application. We've got it on the calendar, the candidate screening, we'll come to the board and kind of review the candidate poll with you. We've done, we've made a slight change to the first-round interview dates. We've got those changed, we'll make that change. And we've changed the date of the actual hire date. This is great, this is so helpful, thank you so, to this point, this has been great, okay? Okay, and then I think Deb will talk a little bit about when we actually get involved with the candidates in terms of our look.
Okay. So anyone who applies for your position, whether we have recruited them or they have applied on their own, we will do vetting of that candidate. Our application says they have to give us three references on that application. We call those references, but we also call people we know. So our vetting does take us a little bit more time because we're not just going to call the people that are on their application. Those people love them or they wouldn't have put them there, let's face it. So we wanna make sure that we're vetting them very carefully. So that does take a little bit of time. We do online checks, we do social media checks. Anyone who has a superintendent license has already had FBI and local, you know, authority checks. So we wouldn't do those kinds of things. But if we have provided services, sometimes if boards say, oh, well, I don't think that's quite enough information, can you tell us other ways we can check out this candidate? We'll be able to do that for you, okay? Then for the interview process, we develop, and I'm sorry, I left it out in the car, we develop a notebook for you. And that notebook will have everyone who's interviewing and their entire application packet right there for you at your fingertips. So you will have a notebook, it will talk about what you can and can't say because you are bound by some legal requirements there. It will have a scoring sheet for you, for the candidates, so you can evaluate them. Your first-round interviews will be scripted, which means every candidate gets the same question. And then you have a way of saying, oh, I can, I can see a difference here, I can compare these two. And then for the second-round interview, when we have that superintendent search profile and everybody's talked about challenges, we're going to ask you as a board to identify three challenges from that list of consistent things people said that you want the applicant or the finalist to tell you, this is how I'm going to approach that issue. These are the steps I'm going to take, this is how I will address it. And we give them a time limit and we make them present in person. I know we've talked a little bit about, do we want them to do a video presentation? We can do that as we get further in the process. And they can show that video presentation at the community session. But we can talk about that as we go through the process, but we definitely will identify three issues for them to address. Okay? And then we'll work with Evan probably to get rooms set up and all of that. So all of those things will come to you as they happen. Forget anything? And so now, we have completed the portion of our agenda that we can complete in open session. And it's nice that you- And it's nice that you have so many people here to hear about the process so you can be ready to participate once you see things starting to come on the website and start receiving invitations. So we're excited to have you participate, and the rest we have to do in the executive session.
Thank you so much, Frank, Deb, Evan, thanks for all you're doing too. I don't forget about you. You're a big part of it. Any questions, ladies? Before we go into the executive session?
Under the page, interview preparations, we'll review interviewing rooms with Board of Education members, with Board of Education. That would be changed to the 28th?
Yes, we'll give you a summary of the meeting tonight.
All right, everybody good? Well, I'll move to go into the executive session. I recommend the Board of Education adjourn the executive session according to policy 0166 to discuss the appointment of employment for a public employee. Can I get a motion to move that? This is Martin Dale. Can I get a second? Second, this is Liskini. All right. Roll call. Ms. Martin Dale. Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Ms. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes. Roll call. Ms. DeAngelo Steele.
Here.
Ms. Liskini.
Here.
Ms. Martin Dale.
Here.
Ms. Peterson.
Here.
Can I get a motion to adjourn meeting?
Motion.
I'll second.
All right, Ms. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Ms. Martin Dale.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.